Meeting to order at seven oh five. Do it all rise for the pleasure of me.
Thank you. The states of America. It stands on nation. Who is the greatest?
Good, thank you Paul. Dr. Will, let me answer the questions.
You're doing. So tonight, as you know, we do tend to take a look at the artwork around. The artwork around the room. Students do all of this artwork during this office. So each time usually at the beginning of a meeting that they put new artwork in here, I will honor each student by name. And sometimes we actually do get to have visitors tonight. So I'm just going to go through and give you the amazing artist list here. And sometime after the meeting, if you take a look, you can see some of the great stuff that they've done. The artwork you're seeing tonight is color, color blending with oil pastels. It varies from aquarium design to dare to dream. Styles and, and there's also some what's called fractured portraits that are watercolor paintings. But interior spaces, one of them is called crowded department store. I feel like I lived that one. There's crowded airport, there's clay mug. You know, pretty, pretty cool stuff. So I'm just going to go through and honor each of our, our artists and please take an opportunity to take a look at their stuff tonight. So we have Brayden Dallowport. Thank you. Nathaniel Boat. Boat. We have. Ariana Dongare. And as you remember, I had a Dongare just won the, won the fire poster contest. They're continuing to do some amazing work. Chloe Haney. Chase Hudson. Mannequin, Morgan Joll. Edward Young. Dustin Johnson. Audrey Pelletier. Caleb Shimo. Ollie. Neil Cassell. Madison Wallwork. Michaela Bolus. Joshua Katzer. And that's it. That's the Joshua Katzer's last. So thank you so much to our young artists for helping adorn this area and please check it out.
You know, especially this time of year, spending a whole lot of time in this room. And I sincerely appreciate each of the, the young adults that are spending their time to create this art. It's just like the. Please pass on my appreciation, not only the kids, but they're the teachers there. All right, additions to the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to move P public participation to for executive session.
Your second. Second. Discussion. Let's go. Jen?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Aye.
Will, if you copy that? Public participation will be P to before the executive session. All right. So entertain a motion for the approval of the April sixteenth and April twenty fourth meetings.
Second.
We have discussion. Dan?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Brian. Aye. Katie?
Aye.
Aye.
Well. Both are approved. Now go to public participation. Members of the board of, Colin Board of Education, welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and administration may respond to comments or any points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow up discussion may need to take place outside of this meeting section. I will attempt to alternate between those in the room and those online. Those in the room, raise your hand, those online, raise your virtual hand and we will call upon you. As always, please start with your name and address for the minutes.
Good evening, David Garrett, twenty-three, Berdansky Lane in Tallinn. First of all, for the board members per serving. You guys are nuts. You're here and you're nuts, but thank you especially. Three seven years, I actually caught by accident. One of the agenda topics this evening was discussion of the current conference. I'm here in support of meeting in Central Connecticut. We switched to that conference approximately eight or nine years ago. I think it was the best thing that happened for. In that time, we've been very successful. Many of our. Challenges our students. Versatile competition. This is their role play. Exposes that. Those that choose to go on. Ranger, I want you to feel, but there are some exposes them that I don't want better competition. It has been tremendous asset for the school, the heart of that conference. And I asked. The board continue the mission. Excuse me.
All right, so Claudette Morehouse.
Claudette Morehouse, eighty-nine Merlot Way, Tallinn. I just want to let you know that the audio is not very well. We can't hear what they're saying. It keeps cutting in and out. But thank you.
I'm experiencing the same thing, Tony.
Yep, as Brian said, this, they had similar issues with town council meetings. We will try to project. Right, would anybody else like to speak?
Peter McCann, thirty, Holly Road in Tallinn. I got handles, can I give them to you guys?
Right here.
So. Awkwardly, me and Dave disagree, even though we know each other well. I'm here to entertain the discussion and, and hope that I'll find like-minded individuals. They want to return to the N triple C conference. The paperwork I gave you is status quo and that's currently what we are in, the CCC versus the possible, which is a return to the N triple C, which is the conference that surrounds us geographically. So if you just open that top page, you see the CCC high schools and enrollment. You'll see there's thirty-one schools. Collin High School is currently number twenty-six. And based on projected enrollment numbers for our fifth to eighth graders, that number will drop to five hundred and twenty-nine in the year twenty twenty-eight. I got those numbers from looking at the budget, so that's where I came up with those numbers. Roughly twenty kids every year don't go to Collin High School that attended eighth grade at Tallinn Middle School. The North Central Connecticut Conference, those are their high schools and enrollment. You'd see Tallinn currently would be the third largest. We would be behind Rockville and Ellington, just ahead of Southfield. But based on those same projections in twenty twenty-eight will be sixth largest school in that league. Geographically, on my email that I sent you, if you look at all the towns that surround us, they are all in the N triple C. We're the only outlier. Based on geography, transportation times, transportation costs and cost cutting. The fee to be in the CCC is four thousand dollars a year. I'm sorry, the N triple C is four thousand.
Kate Vallow. Hi there, Kate Vallow, eighty, Tallinn Green. Can you hear me okay?
You can hear me good.
Oh gosh, I can't hear you. Did you say you can hear me?
Yeah.
All right, I think I got an affirmative. Thank you so much. I just wanted to take a quick moment to speak. I've been reflecting lately, so I'm just going to, if you'll indulge me, share those reflections for a quick minute here. Years ago, I was on the website task force for town public schools. And at that time, one of the recommendations that came out of that task force was for Tallinn to have a webmaster. It's very unusual for a district of our size to have the superintendent running the website. Anyway, I was reflecting recently about how, you know, due to budgetary constraints and, and such, we haven't been able to accomplish that goal. I know there are several other goals on the table that, you know, we're, we're working towards, but aren't quite there yet. And with a continuous kind of budget difficulties, it, it makes things like that difficult. I think that it really is notable and something to notice that our superintendent continues to do multiple jobs within the district and does them with grace and in an effective way, putting students first, first and foremost. And I'm really noticing how effectively the board and the superintendent have been partnering together to do everything you guys can to move the district forward in a positive way with any resources at your disposal. So I just wanted to say thank you. It's just really a note of gratitude to the superintendent, as well as to all the volunteer board members for the work that you're doing to try to keep our schools high quality, even while we are facing some devastating budget cuts. So that's all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody else online? Back to the room. None, we will close public participation. Secretary is running a bit late, so we will pass by correspondence report and two points of information. Would any of the board members like to speak? May I ask a follow-up regarding this? Absolutely.
Well, my question is, what is, I see the difference in the numbers. What is the, the difference, whether you have, what is the benefit or the pros and the cons versus having more kids being in one district or less kids being in one of these districts?
So we've actually, around a minute, I'm going to follow you on that. We've got L two. All right, which will go into athletic conference discussion and. Should answer everybody's question.
All right.
Any other?
Thanks for asking.
At all, we'll get to. Any other board member reports? Dr. Will? All right. Moving on then, representatives, committee and liaison reports.
Yeah, so I know monthly financial report, we have as far as new business, but we met on the eighth. Hopefully, from Walt, you sharing, we have some good news coming from the state hopefully with regards to their last, I think it's quarterly payment, quarterly.
Yeah, well, yeah.
To semi annual. All right, so potentially seeing like close like two hundred and fifty thousand being coming to the edge of budget towards year end, but we shall see. Another huge thank you to Pete Stala. He joined FFC highlighting all things facilities. Update should be available, obviously in the minutes. That said, there's a number, number of items we're going to be raising the board with regards to energy costs coming up in the future. Other capital projects that just have to get prioritized for sure after hearing that conversation. But also last thing we could talk about is just an opportunity to relook ERF funding about what we should do with that annual surplus when we have one, if we're able to get more. So another future item. But overall, hopefully good news coming out of FFC with regards to what we hope to be more coming back from the state over the next little bit. So it was like point zero seven above budget right now. An extra two hundred and fifty K would be great, so. Hopefully we'll hear more in our budget power monthly update and that's it for FFC.
Awesome.
What is the? With that, with that two fifty payment, what is the additional overage for the, for that budgetary line at dollar wise?
The, the, the two fifty getting back in excess cost will probably be it with a reduced hundred something overage on the lines. Yeah, for subs and LTS, things like that. So the net would be something less than a hundred thousand.
Okay.
But it's still helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to figure that in our later discussion this evening, that's all.
Thank you. Communication.
We have a meeting tomorrow regarding popular curriculums and what direction we want to take. Most welcome to join us. Let's scratch them tomorrow. It's always been two to two thirty. It'll be two thirty and about three fifteen, and then we'll provide an update at the follow-up next week's board event meeting.
Okay, that's. Negotiation. I want to leave you out. All right. Moving on. And you know what? You know, there's a lot going on. Not only from a different perspective, a school perspective. We've got concerts, we've got spring flames, we've got book fairs, we've got so many amazing things. I had the joy today of putting in my calendar the step up graduation celebrations that, that are coming up that just, I mean, absolutely bring tears to my eyes. I look at everything that we've got going on, both good and bad. And, you know, I think Kate Vallow said it earlier, I personally want to thank you too. You know, when we started this term. You know, we, we admitted that many of us over past seasons always agreed. Many of us are at different levels of experience. And many of us had different perspectives to where we thought college should go. But I am absolutely blessed that the nine of us are able to come together and have the conversations that we. You know, I keep going back to the, the goals that we put together. And I look at those from a weekly perspective, because we talked about when we made them. At some point during the next few months, we're going to sit and say, okay. You know, what, what do we need to adjust? But my mind kept going to the one that's nurture and support just equitable and inclusive school community where all stakeholders are acknowledged and respected. All of them. From each and every child to the administration, to the, to the teachers, to the cafeteria workers, to the janitors, to the person that just happens to walk by. Every one of them is respected and a stakeholder here. And I think, I think the nine of us do an amazing job of keeping that in mind and treating each other such. I love the conversations that we have in here. I love the dissenting opinions. I love when Jen starts sentence by saying, I respect what you said. Because we don't want, if we all agree, we're not going to grow or employ. But I think we figure out a way to take that diversity of thought and make that power that, that's going to benefit town regardless of what the budget says. Regardless of, you know, what our individual aspirations are, at the end of this, town is going to continue to be something special. Because of these. Moving on. It's a bit awkward. Thanks. So nothing under superintendent's report. We will move on then, follow that up with a monthly financial report. Dr. Will, if you would.
So as you know, the first meeting of the month is our monthly financial report. Financial report covers period up to the closing of the previous month. At this point, budget has twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars in it, which is point zero seven percent of the overall budget. I did talk a lot about how we were running pretty tight this year. And so you can tell it being April, that those are the April figures, closing April figures being at point zero seven percent of the budget. This is, this is pretty tough. The budget sheet, one pager is also included as it's the typical case for every month. Go over some just high level things. You know, as we had talked about before, and many of these things are very similar, so I'll kind of, I'll go fairly quickly. But you know that generally the stipends have been over budget this year for forty-one because of some of the, the clubs and activities, the coaches now have five years of experience, so they get paid a little bit higher of a stipend also. As you know, some people, you know, are struggling financially, so the stipend collection this year, people, some people did not pay their portion. So we've been working with those individuals to help. So there's a little bit of an overage there this year. Health, life, safety, disability code over by forty-seven, as we talked about before. Some of the vacancies, people weren't paying into the health insurance. So that means that, you know, we had a little bit of overage there. We've calculated a certain number of people, so when, you know, those people aren't there because of the vacancy or something, you know, something like that. We're not going to have that fine full paid to its fullest, so there's a slight over budget in that line as well. There's other ups and downs a little bit, that's just picking the big step again. Ed services, three, three twenty, it's not so big, but slightly over. These kinds of services are things that we use for special education, audiological services, things like that. Legal audit consultation services over. This is still impacting from a teacher, the teacher negotiation and other legal services we've had to engage in this year. Tech services over by about sixty-four, most of the online services that we use now, as you mentioned in the past. A lot of the steps transitioning away from paper, from math, LA, social studies, science, now they use electronic resources. Those electronic resources have now increased, and so that's caused a little bit of an overage there. Transportation, as we talked about, as we expect this is over by four twelve, four hundred and twelve thousand. Goes back to the things we'd already discussed about before with the new contract. Advertising is tiny bit over because we've had to do more for, you know, trying to recruit more workforce here, about two thousand. Tuition is over, as we talked about before, about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Last month it was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, so it's down a little bit. We were talking about the excess cost payment coming in, so that will help balance that out a little bit. But right now we're negative two hundred and seventy-five thousand in that line. Now, remember this is April, when we get the excess cost to Sharon was talking about in May right now, so that, that helps here. The rest of it, I think you've, you know, kind of seen before, we've talked about it before, and FFC dived into some of these more deeply. So we'll just kind of stop there, see if we have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
No, just, just as one follow-up. I know we talked a little bit about insurance in FFC. You were going to be following up after, from our last port of education meeting. Brian had a couple of questions with regards to conversations with town council and things like that. And you, you mentioned the day after FFC, you might have been meeting with Mr. Boldy. So I'm not sure if any answers were kind of drawn up, but if you have anything, that'd be great.
I did, I met with Mr. Boldy, referred me to Mr. Wilkinson, Mr. Wilkinson and I have worked on a lot of things together. We talked about it for a little while, we can talk about it more. As I said, it's, it's the insurance we pay for with the towns. We have a contract with the town, so we'd have to work that out and take a little bit more time. But what we did talk about was that he did not recommend raising the deductibles right now. His point was, everything else is more expensive. Every, all the materials, all the engineering, all the equipment, anything that we would be replacing because the damage, because of insurance damage has gone up astronomically. So our deductibles have remained fairly the same. We haven't been getting ripped off, we've been charged decent amounts. And so if we increase the deductibles, you know, we're just going to be paying more. And it's a good time to have a low deductible because these, if, if we had that deductible change when we're paying more, we're going to be paying more and the equipment costs more. So it, it's a good time to hold on to the deductible rates we have. But he and I are going to talk about it more to see if there's any other, we have pretty decent rates for insurance. They haven't upped it on us, so we've been pretty lucky that way. And everything else is more expensive.
Thank you.
I guess I would follow up and counter with that sort of discussion or debate in regards to how often is the town or the board of education making claims on these things for these to be worrying about whether things cost five dollars today or seven dollars three years from now?
Often not. I, I think we could probably make a claim last year or the year before. Oh yeah, I assume we make claims every year. There are, there's things that go wrong.
You know, some of them get insurance involved?
Yeah. I mean, we, even the, we debate whether we get insurance sometimes, like if we have the ability to pay for something out of utility internal service fund, we'll do that because the board has sucked away pretty much in there. But we had pipe damage and something, you know, a while ago, we had some boilers blow up or crack. There's all kinds of things we do. Having said that, I think we could probably put together a, you know, document that kind of show the risk involved with something like that.
Yeah.
But it would be something, again, and we've kind of talked about that's looking more long-term than anything that would help us this weekend.
Oh no, I'm not talking about this week, but yeah, I just, yeah. I'd rather still be investigating because I mean, it all has to leave in this budget that we have. It doesn't even start for another four months anyway, so it runs all the way until passed even this day next year, so.
Right, we, we have to commit to it as soon as it passes. But we, I think FFC would be a good item for FFC to look at and we could do a full report on it. And then you could, you know, you could look at what the, what the differences would be, what the risk would be by increasing that.
No, I mean, I understand you got to commit to the budget, but I'm saying though, that the actual insurance, so you can alter and change it anytime if you like. That should have no bearing on the budget because we know whatever the case may be, it's not going to be any higher than what we have.
Well, that's not necessarily true, because if we raise our deductibles and we take a higher impact, we have to budget for a higher amount that we're paying for the deductibles, which we haven't done. So if we're going to do that, we should do that now and reduce something else. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's, that's why it's not a conversation necessarily that would help us in this particular moment in time. If we do plan, you know, if we do that in FFC and we look at a risk report to see what the benefit would be of doing it, if there is one, then we would then budget for the increased amount of whatever the deductibles is that we're pointing, you know, the moment.
Yeah, yeah, but you also get a cost savings from that line item as well, because you're not going to be paying as much into the, into the insurance, to the insurance company itself.
Right, but it could be negated by then, things that you.
Yeah, unless the cost, risk cost comes in.
So that's why I'm saying, I think it would be excellent, it's an excellent suggestion. I think it's something that we want to have FFC explore so that we know, you know, what the, what the in and out would be of that, make sure we're safe.
And I think you bring both, bring up really good points. It's something I don't want to, I don't want to lose. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, they don't. I mean, obviously. I worry about the risk and how that risk affects the buyers. Then it's, we're on the basis and then if you break something back.
Yeah.
The other questions on? Public financial. One question, Dr. Will, I think you should know this, the, the funds that we're getting from the state here in May, is this about the normal time that we'll get these?
In May, yes.
It's. Twenty years.
It's February and it's seventy-five percent in February of whatever they're going to give us and then twenty-five percent of that amount.
Are you sweating? Sweating. We're putting budget for elementary and fall away. We'll pass it on, all right? Then no other questions. Moving on to new, new business, I have an L two athletic conference discussion.
We, we're fortunate tonight, I'll do. Do you have another copy?
Yeah, I guess so. Mr. Boden. Yep. Dr. Will.
So we're, we're fortunate enough tonight, Tim Buskey joined us and is the athletic supervisor for the district. And Tim has, Tim has generated the information that you see in L two. You know, I know that there had been some conversation years ago about it. So this information was provided to the board as the board requested to have a item on this to review. So at this time, I handed over to Mr. Buskey to talk in points and, you know, for any questions on this.
Thanks for having me. Get this opportunity.
Thanks for having me, get this opportunity to hopefully answer some questions and. Do what we can to continue the great athletic programs here at Tallinn High School. Just a couple of things. When we look at the champions from the CCC tournament champions, just want to note that the girls' ice hockey is East Catholic, less than very tall and collect. So we are part of that. So, as you can see in the. Materials that I submitted earlier, there's a lot more, there's a lot that goes into choosing where you play. As opposed to just wins and losses, I know everyone loves wins and losses, we hear the word success, that's the first thing we think about. And, you know, unfortunately, we lose sight sometimes of the other opportunities that athletics provides us. That are away from the pluses and minuses that happen on the field. One of the advantages of being in the CCC is it's a thirty member league, so there are multiple opportunities. To play a wide variety of schools, including a very diverse. Number of schools. One of the things that I talked about was the fact that CCC just went through a. Four month process to realign the thirty member schools since Hartford Public left and went to a Hartford based league. So the four month process to realign, one of the guiding factors was geography. Was the was the second one, the number one guiding factor, and that was diversity. So the schedule that was built, the scheduling framework that we'll be using, will allow. In a four year period for our athletes to be at every single other school, all other twenty nine schools in the league at least once. So, again, when we think about having an opportunity to see what other buildings are like, what other towns are like, what other. Fan bases and athletes are there, it opens up a much larger opportunity. As compared to being in a thirteen member school league, which is what the NCCC is. I I guess I should also preface this by saying. There's no guarantee that NCCC would take us, right, I mean, it's it's not a, hey, we want to come, and they gotta let us in. So there would have to be some discussion there. Just in the past, my affiliation with the NCCC, I feel, I was in that, a member of that league for. Sixteen years, so I feel very confident in the the knowledge I have about the operations of the NCCC and the schools that are there. And, you know, one of the other things I heard, just in addition, I'm not going to read through all of my notes again, because you guys have those there. I'll be happy to answer any questions on them, but one of the other things that I know that people are always concerned about, again, we look at. Wins and losses is what kind of exposure, what kind of accolades are student athletes receiving, and. I think, again, the opportunities with the number of schools and the way that the divisions are broken up in the CCC, it allows our athletes to shine. Just over the past two years, so last academic school year. We had a total of fifty eight student athletes recognized as all conference. Across the three seasons, twenty four of them is all state athletes. And this year thus far, we're at twenty seven all conference athletes with eight all state athletes. The bulk of our all state and all conference athletes come in the in the spring, because they're just, there are more sports during the spring. So I would say we want to pace to keep those numbers. And in comparison, in the average year, we're in, you know, so an average season for us right now is somewhere in that. You know, seventeen to nineteen range. And again, my previous position, an average year for us was in the fifteen to seventeen range with, you know, approximately. Four or so all state athletes. So, the other concern that I would have, that would definitely need to be looked at, and this would be one hundred percent out of our control. Is I know that there is a member school of the NCCC that would love to be a member of the CCC. They are comparable in size to us, they would be someone that you would look at and say, yes, that's someone that we fear we should be competing against. I know from being a. On the committee that started that help with the re-coming for the CCC, they will not realign again. They'll replace us with another school, they want to be at thirty twenty nine, it's not a good number. So if we were to leave and go to another conference, that spot would open up, and again, if you look at. Geographically and size, there are four schools roughly in the NCCC that would fit. The spot we leave, so we would now move to a league that would now, again. My, you know, assessment on it, I don't have this for a fact. But we could now end up in a league that has twelve schools, primarily class S schools. That, you know. Don't offer as many sports as we are afforded in the CCC. Again, you know, one of the notes I want to make. Mention of is. The impact really would be seen at our sub varsity levels, because the smaller schools don't offer as many sub varsity sports. We would be able to find those games, but we would find them with Eelsmith, South Windsor, Ram, Rocky Hill. The same schools that we're playing now. And again, as you saw, the impact would be much greater on our female sub varsity sports than our male sub varsity sports. Eliminating some opportunities for for those athletes.
Sure, what sports would be eliminated?
Well, if you look at. In the NCCC. They offer very few freshman sports, and again, we only have. We have freshman volleyball, we have freshman baseball, freshman boys basketball, in the NCCC, there are zero freshman. Teams for baseball, when you look at JV level, junior varsity level sports. In the NCCC, traditionally, girl soccer is low, softball is low. Baseball is much lower, the lacrosse, there are only six lacrosse teams total in the NCCC. So you only have, you know, five opponents. I believe they're still scheduled in the same way, where you play each of those opponents twice, that's ten games, and then you have to go find six additional games to fill your schedule. So, you know, when you talk about transportation and geography, which is is important. The reality is in a lot of our sports, if we were to move to a smaller conference, we probably would have to travel a little bit further to pick up some of those contests. Or, again, as I said, play the same schools that we're playing now. I I guess the other part of that too is when you look at opportunity to participate and some of those levels not being offered. The other. Side of that as well is. There will be some schools in, again, we'll just continue to talk about the NCCC, simply because that's where the. Where the request is or the ask is, there will be multiple games. That our varsity teams will be well in in, you know, in the league. Or in those games, which is a great opportunity for your younger kids to get up and play in some varsity games. But it just means that your juniors and seniors, your varsity kids are getting less playing time and less prepared for state tournament. Which, again, over the past three years since I've been here, our boys' basketball team this past season. Made the state tournament for the first time since two thousand eighteen, they went in as the number thirty two seed, beat the number one seed in Morgan. When I spoke with the coach at the end of the game, he said, you guys are not a thirty two seed, you play. Really good competition, it prepares your your athletes well for the postseason, and I knew there was going to be a tough matchup. My very first season here, our boys' soccer team went to Stonington, I knew the Stonington coach. I spoke with him before the game, we were the twenty eighth seed, he also said, this isn't fair, you guys aren't a twenty eighth seed, the competition you play is just so. You know, is so good, it prepares you for this, it was a zero zero game with ten minutes left. Stonington did end up pulling it out, and then went on to win the state championship that year. So I think when you look at, again, not just the numbers, but the experience and the level of competition that. Our athletes are are getting. There's no comparison between the two.
So, when you talk about what isn't offered in the NCCC, so there's that, and if we were to change. Would then Tallinn things will not, for things like freshmen, boys' baseball, freshman, boys' soccer. JV and some of the growth force that you mentioned?
That would be something that would be determined over a period of about three to four years, and I say that only because. It's difficult to find sub varsity games sometimes, and a lot of schools will not be able to play. Especially, I know, it's in, you know, we're like this with with a couple of our, with our softball right now, and there are a lot of schools. In this boat that can't play varsity and JV on the same day, because there are some athletes that play on both sides. So what ends up happening, and I know when I was in my previous position, this happened a lot, you schedule a JV game or sub varsity game for an off day. And then the varsity game gets rained out, it gets moved to the JV date because it has to be played. And that JV game gets canceled, and the likelihood of finding another spot for it is reduced, so what ends up happening is your sub varsity players. Don't get to play a full schedule, they don't play twenty games or sixteen games based on what their sport offers, with reduced. Opportunities to participate in games, some students lose interest, they drop out, your numbers get to a point where now you have to actually ask yourself. Can we support, you know, a sub varsities level in particular sports?
From your experiences, is it more of like actual high school sports that are getting individuals into college D one, D two offers? Or is it stuff outside of like premier ODB? And I just say I feel like soccer picks like.
So I think there are. There there are a couple pathways to do that, I think AAU basketball, premier. Soccer, I think, are avenues to. Post-secondary education and scholarships, I think when you start talking about D one players and and. D one scholarships, right, we've all heard the numbers of how astronomically low the percentages of a high school athlete getting a D one scholarship. Those athletes are, you know. Finding, you know, they're being found, if I was a. Speaking from past experience. There was a D one, actually, no, he skipped college and went right into the pros. Picture from Ellington that did not play at Ellington, he played at a school of choice. He was absolutely phenomenal, and he got drafted into the Major League Baseball. I am convinced if he played in Ellington, the same thing would have happened. If he played Tallinn, the same thing would have happened, when you're at that level, coaches find you, I think that. The premier teams and the AAU teams are a benefit, because those allow the athletes during the. Offseason to travel the country, play in in tournaments in which there are going to be, you know. Larger colleges and and coaches there doing the scouting, again, I've had experiences with athletes that. Once they have, if they played in premier and actually had a tennis player who ended up, she had a scholarship to Indiana. Phenomenal, wanted to play for her high school, but just parents decided she couldn't. You know, when she signed her letter of intent to go, her senior year, she played for us. I know the same experience happened here with some of our athletes when I first got here, we had some athletes that were playing in premier programs. And once their college choices were set and ready to go, they came back and played their senior year at high school, so. To answer your question, yes, both out of Tallinn High School and out of premier's, you can get the D one level. But there is just something about playing high school sports with your friends, that's a little bit different.
Do you think it would be beneficial to like all conference, all state, all New England's for. Individuals like maybe on like a second tier, like maybe not even starters on your varsity team, but to get the acknowledgements for. All conference and the NCCC's when they could never get it in.
Again, I would.
Just from your experience.
Yeah, I I would say that the that the numbers that we are experienced here for all conference and all state are comparable to. What they've been throughout my career. Jay?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McCluskey. Do you know the numbers, so you mentioned in the NCCC, the girls' soccer is low, softball's low, baseball's lower. Only six lacrosse teams, that struck me, do you know what the numbers would would sort of look like currently in the. CCC, or if if not, how difficult is it right now getting games in comparison to what you assume would be? You know, the process would be like for the NCCC?
So again, getting games is. You know, a little tricky, right, it depends on why someone needs an additional game, or why we need an additional game, so for example. When we look at, right now, our soccer programs are really solid. They're experiencing a tremendous amount of success. Both on the field and and in the classroom, and so when we look at. Extra games or non-conference games to pick up for them, we try to make sure that we're challenging our athletes, right, that we're going to put. You know, get a a a team that we're going to play that's going to help them again prepare for the state tournament. Sometimes in sports that are struggling a little bit, you want to look for competition that is going to be at your level. Right, allow your teams to have that success, to see what it's like to play, you know, teams that that are in the same situation that they are. And when you get those teams that are kind of middle of the road, you want to also look at, I don't want to pick a non-conference game that will challenge us. But at the same time, we'd like it to be one of our eight wins to make it to the state tournament, right, so. I don't think the process of. How we find games or why we find games of being difficult, any more difficult, I think the difficulty would arise in the number of games that we would have to find. That would be larger than what we are right now. And again, give me. Ten seconds here to. Pull this up, I could just give you a quick example. So right now, for example, in girls' volleyball. We get a seventeen game schedule. NCCC, the schedule would be closer to thirteen. At the. Girl soccer. At the sub varsity level. We're looking at sixteen teams in the CCC as opposed to seven sub varsity girl soccer in. In the NCCC, and then again. You know, girls' lacrosse, fifteen varsity programs in the CCC, fourteen sub varsity programs. Six in the, in the NCCC, boys' lacrosse is the same. Again, softball. Sub varsity, five programs in the NCCC, fourteen in the CCC. And these are just numbers based on, that I got, based on last year's schedules and what schools were offering.
Got you, all right, no, I just wanted that comparison, I mean, this is something that, which since we got your, your your sheet, your your. Correspondence has been in the top of my mind, so it it's interesting comparing. I hadn't thought about that before, how there are sixteen teams, I mean, just take girl soccer, for example, sixteen teams in the CCC compared to, I mean, seven. In the NCCC, that that's, I mean, that's a very big difference, so.
Missed that a little bit there, there are sixteen games that we're getting in girl soccer from the CCC, there are actually thirty. CCC girl soccer teams, each school sponsors a team, so again, when you look at where we can go to find additional games, if you wanted to. There are plenty of opportunities just right within, within, within our league.
You said there's thirty girl soccer teams in the CCC.
Yes.
And there are so many in the NCCC.
NCCC, last I looked, there were.
Nine, okay, so that's.
So that's, right, Dr. Miller, thank you, yeah, no, that's that's the vast difference right there, that is very revealing in itself, so. No, I appreciate that point of clarification, thank you.
Another thing I wanted to mention, Dr. I made a note here, so last year, if you would look at our budget, our expenditures for league dues. They were increased, simply because the CCC. And every league does this, and that's the other thing that's nice too, is the CCC offers league tournaments in all the sports. Right now, they're about eighty percent, and planning this for next year, that every sport will offer a league tournament. That's not necessarily the case in the C, in the NCCC, but. Whenever you play in league tournaments, it was the same in the NCCC, there's a fee to that, and no one, you know, it it's not an expenditure that. It it's not an expenditure that the league is gonna take on. So when the league runs a tournament, those costs are then passed on to the schools. The CCC also does a a end-of-season coaches banquet, let's say. Uh where they go and they recognize the the division champions, league champions, any of the sportsmanship award winners, which we've had uh three in the past two years. And again, those fees are not absorbed by the league. Those are charged back to the school. So what the CCC, what we decided last year was. In addition to our dues, which are only thirteen hundred and fifteen dollars, if I remember correctly, when I left N triple C, we were somewhere around eight hundred dollars. But there was a one-time activity fee. We went through and we said, all right, what is each tournament? What do we assess each school for tournaments? What do we assess each school for these these dinners? What do we assess each school for any other league fee that's above and beyond the dues? And that total came out to four thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. So that was basically put into an account. And now any tournament we make, any um banquet that we go to, the money, rather than sending us another invoice and us constantly, you know. Getting a PO and writing down checks, that money's just deducted right from that account. And that will continue to to dwindle down until. We get to a point where we'll have to um replenish it. So and each school will be a little bit different on that based on on how many tournaments and and and. Coaches go to the dinners. So I I would venture a guess that we're not gonna have to replenish that count, that portion, that activity fee account. For another two to three years. So it's not a one-time fee, but it's a once every three to four years.
To be honest, I'm not an athlete. And my current high schooler isn't either. So a lot of the conference and tournament stuff you're saying is like another language to me. But you you said something which um hit an important point. And I I do, I have a, I have an eighth grade baseball player who will certainly be wanting to play in high school. And when you talked about that, you know, you have student athletes who, you know, go to other schools, but then, you know, come back and and play for the high school. And the importance that that is for kids, you know, to have that experience to play sports with their friend. Um I feel like what I'm hearing a little bit of, and I just wanna state it and see if you agree. Do you feel like by changing conferences, it's wanting to limit the environment of students that we can give the opportunity to play sports at high school? Especially for female students?
If, yeah, if I had to predict, I would say it's more likely than not that opportunities would decrease. Moving to a smaller league. Um I I couldn't tell you by how many. But the other thing we always need to be cognizant of also is, as opportunities decrease, especially if it's um a heavier. Uh burden on our female athletes, is we have to always like keep our type of eye compliance in 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 mind and in sight. That we are offering, you know, um the same opportunities, you know, to to both uh both genders.
And again, the experience of being able to play sports in school does a lot for students, you know, more than just.
Again, it's kind of like, you know, we've all heard the percentage that goes on for a D one scholarship. We also have all heard that um athletes have. Better attendance in school, um are um, you know, generally more outgoing and um get more involved with community service. They are, you know, healthier. Yeah, um so um there are definitely benefits beyond just what they're doing on the field. As far as their overall academic and and just their their experience in in school.
How many of our teams, you might remind me, well, let me say, I agree a hundred percent with you. If you're good enough, doesn't matter where you play, you're gonna get down for college. Especially today with social media, so um but how many of our teams would you say are sub-five-hundred record teams? And I'll 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 kind of, while you're looking at, I'm I'm asking that because. You know, when I look at the two conferences, we're a small fish in a huge pond. Uh in the CCC. And as a little league and a legion coach. I look at some of these teams that are in the CCC, some of these towns that are in the CCC, and I say, oh yeah, they beat us pretty bad. They beat us pretty bad. There's not many of them I can say on this list in the CCC that we really compete well with. Um and then I look at the teams on the NCCC, and we do compete well. And I'm, my mind is going to the morale of the kids that that I'm coaching. When uh we we regularly get beat by some of these larger schools. And um and then the morale of the kids when we beat some of these schools that are more equivalent to to our level. And um, you know, I I I think about my high school days playing playing football when um. You know, our 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 rival was was Perrysburg. And um, you know, and and the great thing about the rivalry is the wins and losses went back and forth. Um so it was, it was constant. And and I just see a lot of, a a lot of uh teams. And that were playing regularly beating us. And it kind of demoralizes our kids. I know I've got a freshman and, you know, he bounces between freshman and JV baseball right now and. You know, yep, there's, there's a few wins here and there, but I believe there's sub-five-hundred teams. And um and they get, they get demoralized. Um because we, you know, we're we're picking our our teams from. Half of the amount of kids that other teams have. And and you know, I think there's something about morale. When teams are doing well, morale for the entire school.
So um just to speak to baseball, I'm sure you brought that up. Um again, we are um. Our baseball program is at one of those points where we have too many kids for two levels. And just kind of enough for three. Um so what ends up happening is, yeah, that third level is going to be um. You know, kind of working on on a shoestring sort of budget and will not necessarily um have as much success. Wins and loss-wise. The quick fix, reduce the level and go with JV and varsity. And now you're only, you know, now your program is, again, visually wins and losses look stronger, but you've. Reduced an opportunity for fourteen athletes to participate in the sport. Right? So again, that's why I said when I started that. If we, if we look solely at wins and losses, and if you wanted to, projecting the spring the way I think it's gonna end up. Every single one of our varsity teams this season, with the exception of girls basketball and boys lacrosse, will make the state tournament.
So the winning, winning record or losing record?
Little bit of both. Um seven and four in football, twelve and three, eight and five, twelve and eight.
This isn't just spring, this is all the sports.
Yes, all the sports. Um and then I I just don't have the baseball ones.
Yeah, I I guess my mind goes to the.
Ten and four, eleven and two, twelve and eight. These are last year's fifteen and four, fourteen and two, eight and eleven, four and thirteen. So, yeah, I would say that a larger percentage than not of our teams have winning records. Traditionally. Now, our sub-varsity levels, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but again, um. Depending on what you do, again, I I know. You know, in past, looking at, and even, you know, now looking at some sub-varsity teams that we play against, uh yeah, they're they're really good. Um and you know, our athletes go out there and they 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 try their best. And and um again, I think it's the opportunity to play. And the knowledge that it's gonna continue for hopefully the four years that they're, that they're in high school. And that not every day is gonna be a win, you know. Um and again, like I said, we look at. Uh what goes on as far as the relationships they build, the relationships they're building with adults, the fact that they're learning to manage their time. Um make sure that they're, you know, keeping track of their grades, their family, their friends, their their team. And then again, just the the other, you know, positive factors that they're bringing out of it, I think outweigh uh sometimes having a rough season. You know, and I say this frequently, I've seen teams that have gone twenty and oh. And walk off the state championship field like, thank God, that's over. And I've seen teams go oh and twenty in the last game. Cry in their eyes because they can't come back tomorrow if you're their friends again in place. So again, it's not always about. It, when you look at an education-based athletic program, um yeah, wins and losses are easy to see. But I think if we look at the intangibles, stuff that that we don't keep track of and put up in our record boards, I I think. There are a lot of positives that are coming.
Do do more wins and losses make talent more attractive? Athletically for kids moving?
I don't know how many people are moving into talent on a, on a yearly basis. Uh I guess if you had an athlete. It's like speaking of personal experience, there is a family that contacted me in this, in the fall from the southern part of the state. That were moving back this way to be closer to family in Boston. And they chose uh talent. They had uh two middle school athletes uh from the parent's estimation. Very, very good athletes. Uh they did come up and participate with some of our travel programs. And from the coaching staff I talked to there, they were good athletes. Um so, yeah, I guess. You know, having a a program that is, you know, successful helps, um but. Clearly in that parents' eyes, that family's eyes, we're doing what we need to. In addition, I, and again, I. Taking credit for people moving into town because of what we're doing, right? There are a lot of great things that are going on here, um you know. But uh, yeah, I think people look at that if they have an athlete. If they don't have an athlete, and uh my youngest was drama. If we were moving and going to a new town, that would be the program that I would look at.
I definitely think successful things happening. Anything in our school that's successful, sports, drama, the art, you know, all of that is, it makes it attractive. I know the um the baseball coach for Rockville, and uh they, if I'm not mistaken, they recently changed to the to the CCC. And um and he has said it has been the best thing um for for their kids, their school. Um with the morale, um just with the energy surrounding, um you know, school athletics. Um because now they're able to compete and and they're able to show some success. Um you know, I agree with you. It's not all about wins and losses. A lot of life lessons can can be had in losses. But there's a lot of life lessons that can be had in wins as well.
Absolutely. Uh the Rockville situation, when they moved into the N triple C, I was still part of the N triple C. Uh they were struggling in multiple areas in the CCC. Uh their numbers of participation were down. Uh they were struggling to, you know, to meet the needs of the athletes that they did have. So uh, yeah. If we looked today like they looked when they came in, um. You know, maybe there'd be some some different conversations. Um so what did happen in addition to their move to the N triple C. Right on the same time, they hired a football coach that was uh on the staff that I, that I oversaw. A phenomenal individual. He went to Rockville, brought some of the staff with him. Um. All great men, uh young men as far as role models and football knowledge. They built that program up. They had tremendous success. And um it then spilled over into other areas of their athletic program. So, yeah, I would say in their particular case, uh where they were when they moved, it was um, you know. It was successful, you know, for them. Katie?
Hi, thank you. Um I'm just looking for some clarification around the word participation. What does that mean exactly when you say that? Does it mean? On the field or or, you know, whatnot? Or does it just mean being allowed onto the team? Do we restrict students from participating? If they, if, you know, are there tryouts? I'm a little unfamiliar. My child is a dancer, and so that's not some, this isn't something that we participate in as a family. So I'm just trying to get a sense of what that word means in this context.
So when we talk about total number of participations and total athlete participations, we are talking about uh student athletes that are members of the program. It doesn't delineate between levels. It doesn't address whether or not they are a starter or come in uh later. Or if um they, you know, they get limited playing time. So it's just how many athletes are participating in our programs at any given time. Some uh some of our sports do have tryouts. We do unfortunately have to cut some athletes. Uh based on those tryouts. Actually, we probably, probably, we cut more athletes at the middle school level than we do at the high school level. Just because of fewer opportunities, right? During each season, we only have uh three sports. Whereas at the high school, uh we're averaging probably about, you know, uh. Eight different, you know, six to eight options that an athlete can take part in uh during during any given season. So, uh but the number of athletes that get caught and are not not able to participate. Uh what happens a lot in their, in their chosen sport, what happens a lot, especially in the middle school in the fall and the spring. Is they find their way to either cross-country or track. And um at the high school, if they don't make the winter sport. That they are um trying for, a lot of will find their way to indoor track. Uh and and again, that's a. A wonderful area to be in. I think our running programs are phenomenal. Uh runners are just built differently. Uh the way that their community is. So I think that's a real positive experience. And again, with our running programs. Uh there are no tryouts, there are no cuts. If you show up every day and you work hard, you are on the team and you participate. But to go back to the original, participation here means um being in the program on the team.
So would it be reasonable to suggest that a move to the N triple C would mean that? More students would be, more student athletes would be at the same level as those that they're competing against and would potentially have more time. Participating in games, you know, competing. Or is, are are sports structured here so that? Everybody sort of has a turn? Or if you could sort of pick that apart, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So at our uh sub-varsity levels, our um expectation and our plan is. Especially in the early parts of the season, to try to get everyone on the field as close to equal as possible. As the season goes on. That that um playing time, if you want to call it that, um, you know, separates a little bit. Uh at the varsity level, however, it's usually the players that uh have demonstrated they're the the. They're the players on the team are the ones that uh participate or play more. Going to a conference where uh some of that competition, that competition level may not be as. You know, as high in in all sports, in all games. Again, I I wanna make sure that we're saying that. N triple C has some some wonderful individuals in there, and uh their student athletes work super hard and 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 they're good, they're good. I am not knocking their abilities. Uh it's more the structure and what the the league itself offers. But I just, again, I do know from history in the N triple C uh that. We had a, you know, multiple seasons with one of our coaches who was extremely successful with with their sport. Uh in which our sub-varsity players actually played maybe equal. You know, time in varsity games, um which means they're also playing in their JV sub-varsity games. And uh by the end of the season, if you add it up to minutes, some of them may have had more minutes than actual varsity starter. Just simply because it was a soccer team and and there were some games where in the first half, the score was eight to nothing. And the coach who just wasn't going to beat a team, you know, that badly. So our sub-varsity players would go out and play against the varsity players in other team. And again, that happens everywhere. It happens here in the CCC as well. I'm sure there are some um instances where it's, you know, happened to us late in games where teams have have put in. Um, you know, sub-varsity players or um lower varsity players. Uh again, that's, I think if you're a good coach and your understanding of the teams you're playing, you sort of manage that ahead of time. And and you don't let it get to um a situation where it becomes really noticeable. But that would be. I, again, going to a a league that had fewer opportunities. Yes, you may again see a a numerical increase in um in what was being produced. Yes, you may again see a a numerical increase in um in what was being produced, but I don't know if. The the what we were getting out of it from our student athletes uh would be necessarily the same.
Understood. Thank you.
Katie.
Yeah, no, thank you. I just wanted to ask in your opinion, you know, on the flip side of the coin, um, we've received multiple emails just about specifically um. Mentioning and and as well as Mr. McCann's testimony here a few minutes ago about the enrollment decrease. When that happens, you know, it we're we are going to be close, more closer, a lot closely aligned to um the NCCC. In your opinion, does any of what you've said today in terms of the positives um for being in the CCC, does any of that change? When, if or when our enrollment decreases over the next few years, um, specifically in the middle school and uh high school level?
Again, um. If I can predict specifically what would happen, uh, if you look at if the enrollment. In athletics matched the decrease in enrollment in um in the school. Potentially, there could be a situation or or a time in which we wouldn't be able to um fill all of our sub varsity sports. Uh, and then you would potentially look at, you know, is there a need to do something different? Uh, but looking at our participation numbers, uh, really with the exception of. The two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty season where the spring was eliminated. And the twenty twenty one where football wasn't played and we were still hybrid. Um, those two outliers where we're, you know, our participation numbers were down below five hundred. Um, every year since two thousand seventeen, our participation numbers have been above six hundred. So, um, even though our enrollment in the school has decreased, our athletic enrollment is has has decreased. Quite the amount. Wanting some odd athletes, but not obviously at the same rate that um. At the the overall school enrollment is.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, it's it's and then and I won't drag on here. I just wanted to mention that, you know. It has to be considered when and whenever this decision is made and all these things, however far down the road that is, um, you know, you could have. You know, twelve kids on a baseball team, for example, but has any one of those twelve ever caught before? Have any of them pitched before, you know, or do they have to be trained, you know, by that, by their coaching in what, a three week span before those games happen? So there's things like that and you could look at base uh basketball, has any of them, has any of these players brought the ball up court, you know, before? Have they have they led the five people on the court before? So, you know, when when numbers decrease, that has to be considered in the fact that, you know. Now we're putting students in 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 more difficult situations than than they, I guess, needed to be. Um, and and training them sort of on the go. And so, um, I think that's something to track to track over the next however many days, months, years, whatever it is. Um, just to keep our eye on it. Thank you.
Actually, it's more of a, if you're going to track that number, Jayden, you probably want to look more at um. You know, the opportunities that are afforded to youth here in town, which are uh phenomenal. I think talent uh rec and the talent uh. Youth sports programs do a really good job. I know our softball program in town has expanded to three teams this year from one team. Um, previously, so really it's, you know, you 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 kind of look at that feeder system, what's coming up. The numbers of athletes that um participated at the middle school level was uh. Larger this year than in any year that I've been here. Um, those that participated in and also those that signed up to try out. Uh, for example, right now, our uh track program at the middle school has eighty four student athletes on it. Um, I've never been part of it anywhere where we've had eighty plus athletes on our track programs. So, um, you know, again, as I said, I know we look at overall potential declining numbers in the district right now. I don't think the trend uh matches athletically.
I do want to make a point too, because we're we're talking about wrong, we're using the term generally. Our enrollment is actually going to go up in the next ten years since rising. Um, when the Burchfield report um shows that even Burchfield school will be riding, oh, the K five in particular is rising. There are some large classes going out at the high school level, but there's larger ones coming in. So the the district's reached its threshold and will be climbing in the next ten years, not going down. At the high school, you'll see a change of about a hundred by twenty twenty eight, but that's about as far as it will go. Um, but then the lower schools, it's increasing. So that overall enrollment will still be increasing, especially for the next five to ten years.
Go ahead, Jayden.
Thank you. No, sorry. And Dr. Will, that that's sort of my point is whether it goes. If if it goes down and it does not end up, the projected, you know, again, that ten year estimate is again that it will go up. I'm not disagreeing with with the estimate. I'm more so saying, you know. God forbid that doesn't end up happening for whatever reason, for whatever reason. Under having these understandings of of these little tiny complications that could go along with um which conference we're in. I think, again, that is what needs to be tracked, like that, 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 again, Mr. McCusky talked about that feeder system. I've got all the faith in that feeder system as as a former coach in that feeder system. And so, um, you know, the I I have no doubt about, um, you know, the quality of of human beings that. Um, they're sending up to the middle school and high school. I'm just more so saying, you know. If this is a situation that. We can't necessarily escape because enrollment, for whatever reason, in eight years is continuing to go down or seven, six, seven years, whatever it is. Um, is going down. Again, we could find ourselves putting some of these kids in a very difficult position, literally on the field or on the court. Um, and uh, but again, in my opinion, that's not something that we address necessarily right now. That's down the road when we start to see that trend happening. And so I just want to clarify that and get that, make sure that's all cleared up.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dana.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, first, I just want two things. One is I just want to make sure Lisa knew I jo- I joined at eight. Uh, I do apologize for my tardiness as I was at Ms. Marcus Sani's and T I S fourth grade band concert that was phenomenal tonight. So, um, and I I'm just catching the end of this conversation, Ms. McCuskey. I I appreciate what I heard from you uh tonight. And um, Jayden, uh, I appreciate your, what you were talking about, but I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of the fact that. The fourth graders, current fourth graders and the current fifth graders are quite a big bubble. And it is a heavy, heavy uh soccer soccer group and baseball group. Um, so I I get very nervous when we talk about declining numbers and declining enrollment. Because that bubble is coming into the middle school and then will be at the high school in just a handful of years. So, uh, I do look forward to continuing this conversation. Um, I think that, you know, our athletic program is just is very important and. As apparent as any other co-curricular that we have a conversation with, so it's just about finding the right fit for our student athletes. Um, but I just want us to be cognizant of that bubble. And I don't have it right in front of me, but that those fourth grade and that fifth grade class, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Willett. Um, are quite larger than the current sixth grade, seventh grade class right now. So, um, that's going to increase those numbers coming into middle school and then in turn increase those numbers going in the high school in a handful of years. And I did, I look forward to continuing this conversation for sure, because I think it's important to have the proper alignment for our student athletes.
Yeah, it's just to clarify, you know, enrollment, uh, projected, this, sorry. Uh, just to clarify, you know, again, the bigger classes are going out, there's truth to the, you know, dipping there a bit at the high school at this time. But to give you an example, in fiscal year twenty five, the nine twelve looks to be about six seventy one. In fiscal year thirty four, it's going to be six eighty three. So six seventy one in fiscal year twenty five, six eighty three in fiscal year thirty four is what's projected. Um, like, yes, so it's 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 stabilized, I would say. It's not going down in the. And it's going up overall as a district. But at the high school, that's what it looks, six seventy one fiscal year twenty five, six eighty three fiscal year thirty four.
Thank you, Dr. Will. That's that's exactly what I was trying to bring to your attention, because there is a big group of young student athletes leaving T I S. Over the next couple of years, going to middle school and then high school. So thank you for clarifying that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Just just also to add on to that, even if we use that that six eighty three number. We're still in the bottom four or five in in high school enrollment in the CCC, which, you know, definitely impacts us.
Well, you're talking about figures, right? I'll go too. You have to check out ten years for all of them.
Sure.
So my first go around here, I just wanted to give Peter a chance to kind of finish up. He was kind enough to bring us this presentation as well. I know he got a two minute timer earlier. Uh, if he had any pros and cons, he wanted to add to what he was saying earlier. I know he's like the listener, both sides of the debate.
Well, I appreciate that. Um, I didn't know until yesterday that this was going to be on the docket, so I didn't have the time to prep. But obviously, it's something, I went to the um athletic director four years ago. Um, I, his name escapes me right now. He's the current A D at Southfield. And I met with him four years ago. My daughter's in seventh grade. In in the youth sports, I saw what was happening four years ago. And I said to him at the time, hey, we need to start thinking about making some changes here. Um, four years ago, I was told to wait. And here I am four years later. My daughter's currently an eleventh grader on a successful um female sport she plays girls lacrosse. Um, they had a game today. Shout out to them. They won. Um, but as far as when when we look at the the numbers. And I know Jayden asked the question about the sub varsity um numbers. I'm just going off the website, the C I C state website. Um, I'm looking at softball because that was something that was brought up. Uh, according to the C I C's website that we update as the talent public schools, we had. First game canceled, second game canceled, third game canceled, fourth game canceled, fifth game, we played summers. Sixth grade, uh, sixth game canceled, seventh grade, uh, seventh game canceled. So according to the C I C website, which could be wrong, we've had one JV game for girls softball this entire year. So when we talk about where have the cup programs, it looks like girls softball has already been cut. Um, I mean, I know they have a team, but not enough to feel the game, um, except for against summers. Uh, when we look at lacrosse, my daughter, I get a weekly email from Coach Tyler. She's fantastic. And often it says varsity at five, JV game canceled. Those are the emails that I get weekly. Um, the JV's um lacrosse, which my daughter played. Um, canceled, postponed, game canceled, game, 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 game canceled, game, 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 game. Game canceled game. So they only had ten games. So it's not like we're filling the slate. And this was, this was me sitting here just looking at the website. On, you know, five minutes of notice. So I don't know what all those numbers look like, but I just know those are two that were referenced today. That those programs are already in decline. Um, I've coached at Rockville High School. I coached when we were in the CCC, boys basketball. Um, I was lucky enough to resign prior to them switching league and joining the NCCC. Um, where they ended up instantly having more success. Um, so some people are like, wow, you picked the wrong time to get out. And I said, no, I wanted to set the next coach up for success. Because your first year as a head varsity coach in a sport, you don't want to go three and seventeen. And unfortunately, up until this year, last two years, that's where our boys basketball team was. That's what our girls basketball team is. Uh, my daughter played uh basketball as a varsity athlete as a freshman at Talon High School. They won their first game. Everyone was excited. They lost their next nineteen in a row, in embarrassing fashion. I was part of a game in which she separated her shoulder at East Hartford High School. They lost seventy two to ten. She dove on the floor with six seconds to go, and I'm thinking to myself, girl, why are you diving on the floor? You're down sixty two points. But that's how much they care.
I apologize for doing this, but typically, you know, they hear. Appreciate that. We should hear what Mr. McCann has to say through his communications with the board, but typically, you're, we don't have board gauging public. And it's just, Mike said, that's not typical to pr- typically to practice in public participation when that occurs. They don't say anything against Mr. McCann. It's just if you're going to allow it in Mr. McCann's place. It may be expected to be allowed in every other place where someone wants to do it. So that may not be with the board. If the board wants to change its protocols for that purpose, that's one thing, but otherwise, we should probably think about that.
I appreciate the support and thank you, Mr. McCann, for your your opinion. Does anybody have any further questions for? Okay, uh, so I just have one comment. And I thank you both. I thank everybody that that's brought some facts to the table here. I I think there's something, there's something to the the, not necessarily the enrollment numbers, but the participation. What Bill says as far as the the value in winning, you know, while I completely recognize that. The lessons that can be taught in in losing and sportsmanship and all the things, it 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 does feel nice to win once in a while. Um, that being said, uh, I also want to make sure and I'm certain that the administration and, you know, everybody involved is looking out for the the best. Interests of our our athletes. Uh, so so I think this is something that we need to keep. To to Mr. McCann's point, I don't want to wait four years and have the conversation. Uh, I also don't want to come back in a week and say, has anything changed? Uh, I think that we need to take a look at the numbers. We need to look at the things that you're bringing up as far as. You know, the the participation, the wins, how the conference at home is enacting around us. Uh, and I think we need to bring this back probably in the early fall and have a similar conversation to make sure that it stays moving.
I did that one piece. I know it's bad precedent, but just one thing, I mean, you spoke for quite a bit.
And I appreciate it. We we have a public participation gathering at the end, uh, if you'd like to stay.
Okay.
But I do need to kind of brain control back into the.
All right. Thank you.
As always, I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Will, I'm moving on to item L three budget discussion.
Right, um, so if you take a look at, um. Essentially, if you take a look at the budget scenarios, we've been talking about many different budget scenarios as we've gone through the process in the last couple of months. Um, what I did try to do for the board was provide you an opportunity to, you know, analyze and think about possible. Um, ways that we could address the uh town council's adjustments to our budget. I know that the board has had a high focus and I and I think it's greatly appreciated on um. Trying to do this in a way that minimizes the impact on on our awesome staff and our teaching, our resources, our per-educative, all of our staff. So, yes, and then across the board. So what I've tried to do is provide you some opportunities here, in particular, listening to what the board has been talking about. I tried to leverage those things that you had brought up in various meetings and various conversations, both in FFC and in board meetings. So if you take a look at this, we have on some basic scenarios here. And I have posted that give you a high projected retirement differential and reserve fund use, low personnel impact on one side of the spectrum. And then on the other side of the spectrum, a low projected retirement differential and reserve fund use and high personnel. And so the purpose of this is you have, you know, you can take more funds from what we anticipate to be retirement differentials. But by doing such a thing, uh, we increase our risk that that line, you know, we'd have problems if we overtake or overassume what we're going to get. So we can assume, you know, certain amounts of retirement differential here. Um, and in this case, the projected retirement differential that I thought we could safely assume. Now would be about eighty six thousand five hundred and three. It's a very specific figure because it is related to very specific people that I think are pointing to be in that situation. Uh, that's if they retire, so just a quick. It is, but I but high probability. That's that's what I'm looking at now in May, May, you know, now we're at May fourteenth, having had many conversations and had spoken with people. Um, I think we can get eighty six five oh three out of this without, you know, but that's the high end, right? Because that's, and to give you an example, I tried to describe for you how that kind of plays out. We usually will hire at a master's seventh level, and now there are people out there, the job market's pretty competitive for teachers. People are going wherever they want. So if the teacher comes and applies and they're the best candidate and goes through the whole process and they're they're an M A ten or an M A fifteen. Uh, we budgeted M A seven, we're taking a negative impact to hire the M A fifteen, right? So that's how that works. If we overdo it on the differentials, then the people that, you know, it's not. We're not um in a market where we're always getting the people at the beginning. Now we do have people that are going into the book, the process that are actually higher steps. So we don't want to overdo it and make a, you know, take too much from that or assume too much from that. So the high projected return retirement differential has an eighty six thousand five oh three figure and using. So the high projected return, retirement differential has an eighty-six thousand five oh three figure and using forty-nine nine ninety-three to nine ninety-seven of E R F. That means you can reach the one thirty-six five of the town council with no personnel reductions if you make those assumptions. The next step down from that is moderate projected retirement differential and reserve fund use and moderate personnel impact. E R F and E R F funds used to be thirty-four thousand eight fifty-seven. Um, personnel reduction of fifty-six one eighty-eight would be a world language teacher at the, uh, high school. And a, uh, so that's fifty-six one eighty-eight, sorry, for the, for the personnel, forty-five, four fifty-five for the retirement differential and thirty-four eight fifty-seven for the E R F use. Those three figures would get you to the one thirty-six five. It would be a moderate personnel impact with that loss. Um, but you're balancing it with some retirement differential, but not as much and some E R F use, but not as much. And we talked about trying to limit the impacts on E R F and other things because you don't ever know what you're going to get for special ed and so on. The E R F is the only place we can go if we get hit with a, you know, an over, overage on things like special ed, special ed transfer. Option three is a low projected retirement differential and reserve fund use and high personnel impact. I put this in for your spectrum as I think, you know, it relates to the discussions you've been having. Um, that has E R F use of twenty-five thousand eight ninety-seven, projected retirement differential of four four oh eight, personnel reduction of one oh six one ninety-five. That is to suit six grade teachers. Um, option four is utilize E R F funds to purchase the educational technology machines and don't make any of the adjustments above. And then option A can be attached to any, to option one or option four. One of the other considerations you can make because the differential is not super high. It just happens that that four four oh eight number matches four four eight number in option three, but those are unrelated. Option A could be retaining your P E teacher, um, and reducing the French teacher. So in that scenario, you're swapping. The reason that's in there is, well, two reasons. There was a lot of feedback about P E. Um, and the individual that this is reducing is somebody that could be utilized in many ways, perhaps in sports and coaching and certain things. Um, so this was, uh, something that I heard people talking about and thinking about. Um, so I inter, put an option near for it. Also, the French position that we're talking about is no longer some, is no longer a person per se. It's a position opening because that person is not. So you're not eliminating an individual now. It would be, you know, a position you're still losing. What impact would that have on world language? We would probably have to have, um, the middle school French teacher split between the middle school and high school to maintain high school sections right now. Um, so we waited for a different preference in the future that we could balance out. So we would still be able to offer French, but we would have to split the French teacher from the middle school and high schools if we did this. So that's, that's the rundown of this. You can also, you know, work scenarios if I'm going to combine.
Uh, first, thank you very much all for putting this together. Um, I know I think all of us want to in that, um, have the least amount of. Several left asked you publicly to please do that. Um, so I'm really pleased with some of the options here. I was going to ask a question based on, um, what you've said about the retention of the P E teacher versus, um, the French teacher. So thank you for explaining that. Um, so then I'll take from that, that, you know, this, again, this will not be an elimination of a French program. It will just require us to have, again, a staff member do both. And we already do have someone doing that for Spanish.
We would reorganize it a little bit and.
So we know it's, it's something that works because we're currently doing it in the other language. So that, um, that's good. I do not, I don't want to eliminate the program. Um, I think we had this conversation, you know, when we talked about even, you know, the reduction of co-teaching, which is something I've heard of even, but I would rather have a reduction than an elimination, which is why I went with that. Um, also, you know, this P E teacher reduction was one of the reductions that actually happened in, in our boardroom. And at that time, we were losing three actual people with the reductions or any elimination positions we did. Now that would, it's like it would be two. If we keep this, this teacher will only be reducing what we did in the boardroom by one person. Which I think was important. We had that conversation then too with the hopes that what we left here with the boardroom, we would do what we could to bring those people back. Um, I also do know this individual and I do know that they are really highly respected by both students and staff. Um, and like you said, they are willing to do a lot for our district. Um, I also think this is another case of, you know, because again, the way that the problems happen, this is a newer staff member and boy, would I like to retain and attract great new talent and by, you know, by being able to save this person, we are, we're keeping some good talent in our nature. So, I mean, obviously it sounds to me like, oh, and I also did want to, I think from our previous discussion, we also talked about how by reducing the high school P E teacher, we would leave two there. We've already got the class sizes of thirty to forty there and it would mean eliminating, um, P E electives.
Would be an elimination of anything beyond the state required.
And so, again, like even with some of the things we talked about, we want, you know, we want our students to be able to participate in physical activities. We, we know that that's important for student growth. And, um, you know, as Dana mentioned, we do have some, and I think Mr. Bussy hit on too, we do have some grades that are more athletic in, in nature than others. And I know that our current freshman class has a very high athletic number. I know our current eighth grade class has a very high athletic number. As Mr. Bussy said, the past two years of the middle school have been extremely high for tryouts and sports. So those guys are, have just hit the high school and are, guy being grown up, I think that the whole. They've just hit the high school. There's more coming. As Dana said, there are more coming. I, I would hate to eliminate the chance for them to have physical electives in a high school. So, I'm hoping that we can go with object, option one.
Anybody else like to speak?
Yeah. Before we go dig too deep in, I was just curious, um, the E R F utilization, like from my understanding, um, I know this is my year one, it's special ed transportation technology. I think we're allowed to just reallocate E R F. So I just wanted to.
Well, we, you have control over E R F generally, right? Um, the board, anytime you're going to make a transfer of E R F funds back to general budget for something, it has to be for, um, special education, uh, technology or capital expense. Right? So you can request that. And that's why it works for the tech.
We're for special ed. We have to request the transfer. The name is one of those.
Under ordinance eighty-six.
The E R F balance is three twenty-nine. If we're taking a hundred and thirty-six out of that, does that put in any sort of dietary danger?
Well, leaves you less to play with if we have a, you know, significant work, scaring special level bridge and, you know, there'd be nowhere else to go and say, reach out to the town. You know, at this point, we're not going to be in that situation this year as far as I can estimate. We're not going to end the year high on our balance, but we're not going to be going, you know, looking and taking from another fund to cover. Um, but that's what that exists there for too, is to catch, um, to provide some security for us if, you know, right now we're at point zero or the seven of the budget. We have twenty-six thousand with certain occurrences. Let's say we, we had some kind of major hit. We, we might need to go to the E R F to finish the year above, you know, above zero. Um, in capital, special ed. But we have in the past utilized the E R F on four things like, um, this, this tech initiative. So it's not uncommon to do that.
Over the last number of years, has there been a situation where we've had to dip into that for special ed or, you know, those expenses?
We weren't forced to, but we did. We planned, we took a certain amount of special ed. Um, we, we took some out of E R F to cover some special ed costs in one of the previous fiscal years. But it wasn't because we were going to go negative zero, but it was just to make sure we were in a positive position and it wasn't because we absolutely backed.
So is it safe to assume that by you putting this as an option for us that you're comfortable with where our E R F balance would be? If we took a hundred and thirty-six thousand out of it?
Well, you know, it's, it is listening to what the board's conversations, um, and then trying to provide you what I thought I heard, you know, you were saying, um, there is a level of risk to going high on your retirement differential and there's a level of risk in going higher in your E R F um, for this fiscal year. I don't think you're, you know, that would be a higher risk that you're going to be negative. But, you know, you're taking a risk if you use a lot of your E R F and, you know, not a lot there. I think it's given the past trends, you, you are likely safe doing so, but it's very difficult for me to say because we're talking about man, you know, a whole year plus past the point that we're in right now. Talking about the end of next fiscal year. I don't know exactly how that ends.
Let me try to just, I'm going to steal the previous. Based on your professional experience at this level where you're.
Um, yes, but it's also important that board decide to take the risk that you are. But it's in here because it is not going to decimate your entire E R F fund. But it is also, you know, so, but it's also something you have to decide. You're, you're accepting because of our level of risk would, would get any of these choices.
So if we look at, if we look at option one and we overestimate that retirement differential by twenty thousand dollars, we're upside down with that twenty thousand dollars. Could that twenty thousand dollars upside down come from E R F to, to balance us back out?
It could be, because then you could pay some special ed costs or cap or something. It's your, that's why it's such a useful fund to you. Because it can be used for those things. And, um, Mr. Sheridan was also looking at how we may approach the town to see if we can expand its use, expand its amount to.
That's my question. Come back. Anybody else? Dana, Jayden, Katie?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just, um, like, just a quick clarification question. Um, this is under new business, um, for tonight. Um, is this going to be moved to board action here? Is that what our next step is looking like here?
That is the intention. Uh, after discussion, it looks like we can come to, uh, would like to give Dr. Willett direction by the end of today. So the next step would be to move it to board action.
Okay, sure. No, thank you. Um, Dr. Willett was very quick in, you know, answering any questions on this. Um, and so I think I'm okay for now. Thank you.
Sure. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm not against option one A, but I do have some other time and place and thoughts and observations. I know it keeps coming back. Had a conversation like, well, I don't know, a month or so ago regards to the computers. Cause mainly whether we pay for these computers for the district or not pay for the computers for the district. Speaking of other is option. Uh, no, it's one of my, I'm the only one, I guess, who wrote in any sort of one, two, five bullet points are all mine. So I don't know why the nine, I'm only one of nine wrote anything in. It's a little puzzle to me, but. So Dr. Willis states about two hundred thousand dollars every single year after year after year after year that the district is paying for the computers for the technology just for the student laptops. Not on top of what is needed for staff. Illustrated and whatever else might be due, the technology used for the district and all the licensing fees. So I guess I, I don't know. I don't know if this is a conversation for today, but I I'm looking to see whether this board or even discussion has had, whether we keep paying for these yearly budgetary item. That's the cost of everything else goes up. I'm sure the cost of this line items. And my thought process was that these get used for an average, I believe, will stay in about three years. Whether you can offset it off to have something similar to where the people in town, and I know the other debate is whether people can afford them or not. You set up some sort of structure where it's sort of like the reduced lunch or free lunch program. You have to qualify for certain, you know, you input your information, whether you can afford the, you know, computer, you need assistance to cover it and the district will cover, you know, twelve percent of them or whatever. And those are not a thing for today, but I think it really, really needs to be explored since extremely high cost moving forward. These things are just going to get more expensive and more expensive down the road we go. I mean, it's like, you know, probably two, three, four years, you're probably out of quarter million dollars just for student computers. So.
And I could say, I'm just, as far as that, while I agree, that may or may not be something probably not something that we can develop in time for, for this budget. Uh, one of the things that we have been, what's starting this at time is that a budget is not just a one-year conversation. It's one moment. It behooves us and the, I think the F F C committee is doing a wonderful, really taking the taking a mantle on this, uh, but having the budget conversation the entire year. So let's grab that particular topic and make sure that it is on one of our agendas coming up so that if it's possible, if it's something we can watch out, we can have it. Re-enter. So then you got the, yeah. I'm sorry, Jayden.
No, I just wanted to, because I respect what you're trying to do very much. And I think that we're all on the same page when it comes to what can we must do, right? And I think all of us feel like we're going to keep fighting this battle year over year rather than it's just going to go away, right? I guess my only concern that, my concerns with that is one, I just, and I don't think that that's your intent. Would be, I wouldn't want to backpedal on the one-to-one initiative just because it got, it took so long to get us here to a place where we had one-to-one tech, right? And we really saw not having it with, when the pandemic hit and not having the experience and what, how difficult that was, right? To get all of our teachers and all of our kids up to speed. And now we do have, you know, great online resources and, and that our staff has now developed over these past few years of being online lessons plans through the end of the year. I mean, you name it, right? So, and we've gone away from books because of that, et cetera, because we have so much online. I wouldn't, I just wouldn't want to do anything that would impact backing that off at all, which I don't think is what your suggestion. Yeah, doesn't sound like that. That would just be my first concern because you and I may not be here in a couple of years. You know what I mean? So I wouldn't want another board or anything to make changes that would go, that would back that off. And then the second thing would just be, you know, I know that, you know, initially I had gotten my children from books before we started the one-to-one initiative because I knew that they needed the experience on that. And they're, they're expensive. So even, you know, I don't, like, my children don't qualify for free lunch, but I think, you know, we had to spend, I don't know what the cost would estimate for, you know, for my two kids to have, to each have their own. If that was, you know, two, three, four hundred dollars each, that would be an issue for even me, wouldn't maybe necessarily qualify for that program if it's like program. And then I think, um, you know, I just wrote a check today for seventy dollars for, you know, end of year activities for my eighth grader. So we're still, and, you know, just paying four hundred and fifty dollars for summer program, you know, so I just to add to that, you know, for the parents piece, it's tough too. So, um, those would be my concerns with that, but I would not, I would not mind having a conversation if there was a way to build on those costs that are, like you said.
And, and that's why I want to make sure. And it's, it's a good idea. But it is a very. And why I want to make sure that it gets enough time to have the due diligence to make sure. And why I want to make sure that it gets enough time to have the due diligence to make sure. Not only the fiscal perspective. So I know Dr. Willett has had, you know, concerns in the previous conversations as far as making sure that. The students have the right material, we have, we have controlability and, you know, all of those different things that need to happen. For it not to be a game machine instead of being an education machine. I want to make sure that the complete conversation can happen. So, but by giving it the time, by making sure that Mr. Sheridan over there in his committee, uh can can give it that. Will make sure that we address it. And if it is possible.
Yeah, the two other things, one, just not counter, Jen, but that on top of it. The more or less my other thought thinking was that if you didn't have to pay if. My thought there would be a slight savings, I would believe in that your property tax rate. And the computers last for an average of three years for the district, I think would almost offset whatever you would have to pay. Because if it was only, let's say it was like uh eight dollars or ten dollars a month for this extra two hundred and something thousand. For the, I I don't know what it would calculate to, but I'm just speaking out loud. There's a potential offset of your property tax, even if it's five dollars a month, it's still sixty dollars a year times three. You're at a hundred and eighty dollars. Let's say it's going to be a a full coverage, but it's probably some sort of coverage in the property tax. Differential versus what you would have to give from, and then these other people that in town wouldn't have to also pay for. The computer. So there there's other sides to it. So the other thing is, what do we think about this to save somebody in regards to having some in-house? Or special developed training used by the curriculum directors instead of. Using like the staffing consulting services for this sort of uh use.
That's um, most of the stuff that we outsource for things that. We're not going to be able to do in-house inter-reading, that we have a seventy-eight thousand dollar grant for, it's a good thing, but if you probably have to absorb. Is state required uh reading program. Um, you know, the, this is something they are not familiar with. And they need to have materials in the train. Um other things, bridges, for example, you know, uh. But most of the stuff that that comprises are things that we need for special educators. Um for special programming and intervention programming. Um and consultants are also brought in for speech and language needs, so it's not quite as clear as that, but we do. Provide a lot of P D on ourselves. In fact, P D Day tomorrow was almost the vast majority of it is stuff we're offering. Um including myself and others. So we do everywhere possible offer the P D and the trainings ourselves. But when, where we don't, it's because we don't have the skill set, you know, we have to have. Uh for instance, so certain training like safety cares will offer because we have trainers, but safety cares is a. A program of de-escalation and physical management for kids that have behavioral challenges.
Yes.
Um but we would need to bring certain people in to provide the training for us to get certified. Um beyond the two we have, if we have, you know.
So it's currently a mixed happening.
Yeah, so we train them where we can and then bring and train them ourselves, but there are other places where we have to bring in outside people. Safety cares we can do, but other things, E M T, we can't do.
So we're continuously watching for opportunities.
We are always watching for opportunities, yeah. Anywhere we can, we offer the P D ourselves everywhere we possibly can.
Okay, my other, if I go up to my list, I won my last point here, you'll get it. Uh this was a five times nine, twenty-five extra points, right? So. So the other one that I had with the the last one here was more or less the um. You know, finding a grant writer for the district, whether it's in, you know, coordination with the town. And us, and we kind of, they can bring in enough grants to cover their own salary and then some. And also provide extra money and guidance to the district or town or. Department of Public Works for road grants or whatever it might be. I don't know if that's been explored, not explored or. Uh people's thoughts on that sort of happening, not happening here.
Well, the town has a grant writer, Megan Masler, but we cooperate with. Um so she does do exactly what you're saying. We we do work together in corporate projects. Um so they already have one, so you'd have to add it to your budget if you wanted to. Right now, uh the people that write the grants in this district are me, uh certain other supervisors and administrators. Occasionally, and those are for the kind of bigger grants. Um those are for the ones that bring in. Seventy-eight thousand or the one that I got for social worker, which over the next three years is a hundred and sixty-five thousand or. Um the title grants and all that, which is hundreds of thousands, four hundred, five hundred thousand, right? And the supervisors also bringing grants in the fifty to hundreds of thousands. We all do our own grants, we're do areas of grants. So it'd be difficult for one person to have the expertise to do all of that. Because we all know our areas very well, we know what we need to do with those grants. So you have to hire somebody and the chances that they would have the expertise to be able to do these various, you know, all these various ones. Um it would, it would be a high learning curve for many years to be able to do that and and, you know. Um you'd be spending money for something people are already doing. You'd have, you'd be paying for a position for something where.
Do other districts have their own grant writer, larger districts than us?
Well, really large ones might. Um I mean, I'd certainly love to have all that work off me if I could, but um. But that, that might be um something a big district can do. Uh but Talon does have a grant writer and we do cooperate with her, so you kind of have that already. You're not paying.
But she's not doing any work for the school grants, is she?
No, but she'll throw something our way if she thinks it's interesting, you know, and we will work collaboratively on it. There was a grant on a battery. That we considered um that would uh put energy back into the grid and all that, and that was a cooperative thing we had talked about for a little bit. It ended, we ended up not going with that because it ended up not, not working out. And the group that was doing it didn't take us on as maybe the ideal client for whatever reason. It's not the people, it's just they look at all the physical spaces and decided somebody else had better. Infrastructure for it. But in any case, uh we, that's an example of us working together to try, you know, to explore something like that. And we do, anytime we see something, we'll, we'll toss it over the fence and it's something we think is, you know, something we can get, we'll work together on it. But she costs you nothing right now. And she doesn't really do the ad grant stuff, because she couldn't, she couldn't possibly do both. But you'd have to hire a physician for that, and I don't know. You don't need to right now because you have people doing it without.
No, I I understand that. Uh my my thinking is. Some of the people that are doing this currently, like you said, you you definitely wouldn't need the expertise, but I was just thinking for educational grants. Whether it be, you know, the yourself and whoever else might be doing them to be better using their time and doing something else than. Bringing an actual professional grant writer to just do right educational grants, who might have. More knowledge for a vast majority. You said you just know your own expertise, you know, somebody E L A just knows their expertise. Maybe you have one such a person that might know eight different areas. So it's just the thought of kind of widening the base and that sort of thing and. Yeah, the goal would be absolutely, if if, you know, we did it down that path down the road, that. Yeah, you'd need them to cover their own salary and bring in more, otherwise it's it's not purposeful to have, obviously. All right, I'd still keep that discussion and exploratory. I'd like to find out. What other towns or districts do have their own grant writers, so maybe uh. You know, plug their ear and see how they make it work.
Yeah, I mean, you'd take a lot of work off.
Database out there, how do we find that information?
Say that again.
The other school districts have their own. All right, I'll stop there. At the end of the day, I'll go with uh option one.
You did cut ninety, you did cut ninety-two thousand five hundred from the Windows eleven installation.
So no, sorry, I missed what you just said.
One of the, just to to give you, you know, the credit and credence, we did cut ninety-two thousand five from the Windows eleven.
Okay, great.
The network upgrade stuff.
Yes.
That's, we took a jump out of what you're talking about, based on your recommendation.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um. So some of the things that I want to circle back and I kind of will go back from when Brian was talking and Jen was talking before. Um, uh the one-to-one technology, I just want to be, well, first, I will start, but it's it's difficult that we're in this position that we're at right now. In the first place. Um we have neighboring school districts that are putting in American Sign Language as an alternate, as a form, as a world language. And we're talking about cutting languages. So um it's disheartening um that this is where we're at, but this is where we're at. Um when we had French four and five fought for kids not too long ago. Um nevertheless, uh this is where we're at. Um and then I just wanted to give some intel and I appreciate everybody's. Out of the box type thinking to try to do what we can to. Align um our finances or our budget and such. Um just to, and I want to just mimic what, reiterate what Jen had said, we've come so far with our one-to-one technology. Um we were really pushing it prior to COVID, the sixth graders were full in, we had um. Uh we had a COVID walkthrough um with the sixth grade team and how much the one-to-one technology and impacted them. We were able to move forward throughout the entire district to get one-to-one technology to not only help us in a, in a pandemic scenario. But kind of fast forward us to get to where we need to be. Um we had to utilize not only uh E R F, but you uh reference uh resources like Tepco. And I believe it was like thirty thousand dollars that Tepco provided the school district. Um so that we can get that one-to-one technology, so we could be at the place where we are, which that comes from all fundraisers, so it comes from taxpayers paying that. Um at some point. So um nevertheless, I I appreciate the. The outside the box kind of thinking, I just, I wouldn't want to derail us from where we are with that. And uh Brian, your questions were fantastic about the grant writer. I think it just um shows how many hats our superintendent actually does wear. Um and there's other districts. Out very close to us that uh have an assistant superintendent or director of curriculum or grant writers and different things. Um so we are asking a lot of our superintendent um to do that. And I think, you know, it's valid to have, want a grant writer or need a grant writer because finding those opportunities only ends up being cost-saving. For Talon as a whole, uh the town of Talon as a whole, uh and the Board of Ed budget underneath the town of Talon as a whole. Um to get where we are, I I really appreciate all the conversation today. I've been looking through and diving through the um. Budget, I would be at option one. Um you know, obviously, I'm I'm a, need to be able to utilize our funds. Uh responsibly um and fiscally responsibly uh and set ourselves up for uh success this year. This fiscal year, this next fiscal year, and so on and so forth. Um I wish that our town would do something similar. That we are doing here on the Board of Ed, uh opting to utilize our, our, our funds that we have an opportunity to support our budget. Um I would be in favor of doing option one plus option A. Uh I feel very strongly about the retention of the PE teacher. Um we just did talk about several classes. I think Jen had said the eighth grade, the ninth grade, the eighth grade, the seventh grade have quite a large uh bubble of student athlete. Um but we also, it's not only just student athletes, but it's our, our students being athletic. In during their day and getting that physical activity. Um we do have a heavy group of kids coming up through the fourth, fifth. Fifth grade classes, so um I think doing any more um. Reduction at the high school level would be detrimental. Um that's where, that's where I am at. Um I know that it's been a healthy, robust conversation and um. I know that we've, a lot of us have looked over this. I'm ready to to move on to the next step, whether that's move it to action. Uh Tony, uh Jen, I I don't know if anybody else has more to add, but I just really appreciate. Uh I heard a few things from Dan and Jen and Tony and Brian and Jayden, Katie. Um I'm just this evening, let alone our conversations we've had over the last several months. And I'm just really appreciative of everybody being creative and and trying to do the best for our school system, so. And Bill, I'm sorry, Bill. Bill, I'm adding Bill on there, I left you out on that. You just came onto my screen. Um but uh, you know, I'm appreciative of of us working as a team and I think we can get there, so I don't know if we want to move to the next step, whatever that might be, Tony.
So yeah, just my my thought on that is, you know, and I'm in agreement. One of the things that I'm a big proponent of. Is that the board sets the direction and then we turn to our superintendent and our staff. To do the difficult work of figuring out how to make it work. And as the town spoke in the referendum and the council spoke in their previous meeting. And we were left with, okay, you need to reduce this much. You know, the board members collectively turned to Dr. Willett and team and said, we don't want to lose staff. But we don't want to have negative effects on our children, we want to have everything. We we want to have our cake and eat it too. Uh and you know, in options one, A. I think I see that staff coming back and saying, this is how I think we can minimize staff reductions. Without losing the programs that you guys have sent. This is how we think we can make it. And so, you know, my personal opinion is I think we give him the chance to do it. And that being said, I've heard one A mentioned it a number of times. Be willing to entertain a motion to move this to board action, so move. So move second.
Bill?
Bill moved. Jen second. Discussion on moving it to board action. All right. During then, let's vote. Dan.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Jaden.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
And I'm, I, Dr. Willett, make this in ten two. Moving on. Business, which puts us in item N one, Connecticut against gun violence request.
All right, so this, if you take a look at um the packet here. The um, as you recall, you asked me to have a legal review of the, the letter. Uh I did execute a legal review of the letter and made adjustments accordingly based on the attorney's feedbacks. Um so this new letter here.
Let's just arrange that again.
It's uh in in the board packet, it's going to be towards the. Mail here, hold on, um. I'm just going to scroll, we're not having great record that. Try to be tricky and cool and just jump there. Um basically, this letter represents a legal, is a legally reviewed and modified communication. Um it covers now the um the topic and it is uh recommended. By Shifan, everyone has one to use. Um it's in the board packet for everybody to take a look at.
Were there big changes?
There weren't big changes, they just modified and they made updated links, um updated references. And then stated things in a manner that uh. Was legally.
So you think it was a positive choice to go to legal review or was it?
I always love legal reviews. They could take action on anything that's legislative. Legislative business. Like I overshot it there, all right. And then I hit a button and it jumps.
Yeah, one fifty-nine, I don't know where it is. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight out of fifteen.
Oh, this, oh, I think I saw that. Uh any comments or questions from the board? Yeah. Katie?
Hi, um, so I can't make any of the links work, and so my question is if the references or any of the ones that. Led to the Gifford Law Center have been removed.
Uh they, they did modify some of that, but they're probably just updating it. So when, when we publish this on the site, which I would publish in our newsletter, I'll send it. That, those links will work. The reason it doesn't here is it's, it's a, this is an agenda doc, document. Um but we will publish, it's difficult to make that perfectly work in it, and you know, on the agenda that we, that we. You know, we'll put it online here, but we will post one for the parents that can, you can click on the links.
Okay, my only concern is that leading to that particular website could change the tone of it from informational.
Say it again, Katie.
So my concern is. So my concern is that leading, having any of the links lead to the Gifford Law Center would be not strictly informational. It's not a, I mean, we all know who Gabby Giffords is, I, I think, right? So I just wouldn't want it to become something that's a little politically fiery, rather than strictly informationable, information about this topic. Do you see what I mean? It isn't, it is a organization that is concerned with the manner in which the gun lobby interacts with Congress. And so I don't think that that's something that's any of our business. While I do think that providing information is the business of the school. I don't think that providing an opinion on a law necessarily is our purview. If that makes sense. That would be my only concern is that it wouldn't be viewed, it would, it could be misconstrued as something other than informational.
I'm looking for the reference she's making here.
The letter had those links. I just can't tell if this has it or doesn't.
The, the letter itself starts at page two of that document. So I'm not sure. Could you state it again? I'm sorry. I didn't hear what specifically you were, you were talking to there. I just want to make sure.
There's no links, there's no links here. She's just asking if anything linked in the letter that we're going to send out, take direct you to Gifford's site.
Well, the letter here, the, the letter itself, I don't see any links to that Gifford site. I need to make sure of that. I think that's what they, they did was they took out anything, you know.
Are, are there links in this? Cause I can't, is, are there links under the blue underlined segments?
The.
Like under legal obligation, where does that go to? The study, where is that going to? And then where it says eight, where does that go to? I think that's the question we need to know.
Yeah, hold on. Well, let me try to post one that can do that so that you have, I mean, two seconds.
All right, thank you.
Let's get a get the computer to do this.
Brian. Do catch Katie. Oh, while he's looking, does anybody want to speak? We'll just let him look. We can wait. We can wait. We can take our recess. Sounds familiar. So, so just mark it. I think the first read of this was a meeting that I missed. So this would be the second read.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm personally okay with it. The first time I read it, I was okay with it, but the only thing I wanted to make sure was legal was okay. Now they're okay. I'm personally fine. So, yeah, just my two cents.
Yeah, I, I wanted the legal review just for the sole fact that, that there were some, there was links to a website that were not related. I, the information with the website, I didn't really have a problem with, but I wanted us, or just to provide state of Connecticut statute information. And that's only my, why I wanted to gear it that way. It's like, hey, I don't want any of the true that were trying to push people a certain way, for guns against guns.
So this is this. This is the striker. These are the changes. And then this, this version here, which would be the one sent home in the backpack and all that. This version here would be the one that goes home so that they are. I'll notice that. It's great. It's just informational as far as I can tell. But, but having said that, this, this is not, what you asked me to do is get a legal review and have it created. This is not from me per se, right? And I'm not saying it's great, you know, something is, is great or not. I'm just saying this is what you asked for is legally created.
The ones that put the links in here?
Chip, the only person who modified this was them. I did not make any modification. I took the letter that you had seen, went, put it through the legal review asked me to and took the letter from the pages. That's the one that's up here.
Yes, but if you're asked, Shipman and Goodwin did not add the links. The links were in the original documentation. Shipman just didn't.
Anything in there, they, they, they just, maybe they didn't remove, but they might have, they might have tweaked the link if it wasn't to something recent. Might have made it more recent.
So is it possible that they changed the last? Good question. Thank you, Brian. Yes, that's what. The legal obligation, what does that, what link to please? Can we just maybe start at the top and just, just so everybody feels comfortable? There's only a couple of them.
Yeah.
The legal obligation one, where does that go to? Thank you. Storage in Connecticut. Yeah, this is the one that went to those law centers. Next one? Shall I?
I think they're safe.
Yeah, they're, they're okay.
October, what's that? American Medical Association, I guess.
Given that this is the second read. Willing to entertain a motion to accept the letter as edited by Shipman Goodwin and authorized Dr. Will to. Okay, discussion. All right, hearing none. Dan.
Aye.
Jen. Brian.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Jayden.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
I'm as well. Dr. Will, please. Distribute this.
Now you're into action on the budget. I'm going to scroll.
And two, this is the budget discussion, entertain a motion for an option. Make a motion to use option one and option A for our requested reductions of 136.
Dang it.
All right, discussion.
All right, now, sorry. I just wanted to thank everybody for such a great, robust and kind and discussion.
This was a good talk. Everybody that, that sent in the email. Dr. Will, your staff are, are being open to, to fresh ideas and running them to ground and for the entire community, you know, it is, as we stated in the town council meetings. While we sincerely are, are looking for the best budget possible, we are going to figure out and make this, we are going to figure out how to be a, a benefit to our children, to our community. And this is, this is one example.
Yeah, I hope the communication like to staff as well going forward is that like, it's supportive for as far as
Yes.
teachers go. So going forward with whatever happens with budget going forward, like we're doing our best here. So any way that you can communicate that downstream to keep teachers during the next whatever round of cuts would be very much appreciated.
That, that is a solid, solid point. And please make sure they know we're not done. This is not knock up with the referendum passes. We are going to spend the next few months, the next year continuing. But then next year's budget is a different conversation. The year after that is a different conversation. We will figure out a way to make this.
Let me clear what you're voting on for everybody. Is that you're, we're voting on in ERF utilization, press of forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-seven and a projected retirement differential usage of eighty-six, five oh three for a total of one thirty-six.
And up today.
Option A. That's option one. And then A is utilizing an extra four thousand one hundred and eight. And you are going to, instead of reducing the PE teacher, you would be reducing the French teacher. French teacher as a design position. So it's not a person. And we would utilize the French to also provide a high school section.
Thanks. Thank you. Took out the chairman. Then let's vote. Dan.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Jayden.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Dana.
Aye.
I'm in, I, play Dana to vote. One and options A.
You hadn't public participation in front of
Public participation to the timer. Again, we'll start in the room. Sir, you've been waiting, please. All right. Well, first of all, you know, thank you guys for the work you do. I wanted to start with that at the beginning, but I knew how quick two minutes was. Watching you guys in action, you guys are saints for doing what you do. I know how hard it is to make budget decisions and looking out for kids. I work at Rockville High School. Our superintendent always says to us, at the end of the day, do what's best for kids. And that's how we drive every decision we make. And that's why I'm here tonight. Because I think that change that I'm advocating for is what's best for kids at Tallon High School. It might not be easy to have the change. You know, there's going to be administrative work that needs to get done, the scheduled games. But as we watch and I see kids who play sports in town and, you know, the struggles they have and the, you know, the, the culture of the building compared to where it could be if we had better results. It's, it wins. It's not about the wins. It's about the camaraderie. It's about the, the, you know, the fun they have at the games. And it's sad because I hear kids, because I'm a coach at Tallon High School, full disclosure, I'm the boys' basketball coach for freshmen. And we have won three games this year. And, you know, those are hard games to ride forty-five minutes on the bus when you hear the kids say it. Man, we're playing, you know, Bristol Eastern today, or we're playing, you know, New Britain. Like they know the outcome and that's a challenge. And, and I know it's not always about winning. It's about the experience. And if we're looking at what's best for kids' experience at Tallon High School, I think that change, even though it's a difficult one, will be best for kids. So thank you for even considering it. I should have come four years ago, but I listened to, you know, someone in, in Tim's position at the time, and they said, no. And, and I appreciate Tim, him and I work together. He's my boss. We, we had this conversation and conversation that we don't always agree on all the time. But I know that, you know, we still, I think, enjoy working together. So thank you guys. Rebecca Rizley?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I had my earbuds on, so I wasn't sure if you could hear me. Rebecca Rizley, one oh three Mountain Spring Road. I just want to share a little bit of a, a personal perspective. And I try really hard not to ever just advocate for my own child, but to advocate for all children. If I'm understanding the conversation correctly tonight, it sounds like there's been a resignation at the high school. But I think, you know, I thi, I think it's a it's a really big loss for the school. It's a, it's a native speaker who's added a lot to the program. It's someone I think that we should have been really trying hard to retain. And again, forgive me if I'm, you know, not reading through the lines correctly in what I'm hearing, but that is how it sounds to me. And I, I just think it's a huge blow. I think it's a huge blow to the World Languages Program overall. It's a huge blow to the French program and the idea that French will now have to be covered part-time by someone having to come up from the middle school. If at all, it's certainly not going to be able to cover the, the higher levels of French that I think our kids should have the opportunity to be able to take at the high school level. So I just wanted to share that perspective. It's disappointing. I know you're doing everything you can and you have to look out for the best for everyone, but it, it's not good. It's not good. And I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, with the multitude of things, you know, that we deal with as a board, I just want to sincerely thank you consideration you gave to the Connecticut Against Gun Violence, both the initiative. I really appreciate it. I hope that you'll be sending it out on a whole basis to new families and new, you know, student veterans in school, uh, schools every year. But sincerely with two meetings that I attended now and listen to all of the things, I don't know how you must have to breathe. Deal with all this weight on your shoulders, but they do a phenomenal job.
Struck me your comments, Mr. Paul, to be in a meeting and to have, you know, sometimes you have disagreements. First repeat here. We're going to go with our. So about this, a freshman daughter that plays soccer team, which is a best run of, you know, high school sports currently. She also is on girls' basketball team, which, you know, as plus he said, it's from one of the two teams that has state tournament experience. Um, and simply, but we are very fortunate to be part of the CCC now. That is one of the two premier in the state. C I A C, uh, bit of coming. We are fortunate to be part of. Mr. Plus, he said, there's another team in the N triple C that is itching to take our spot. He didn't say who it is. I'm going to guess. It's probably a school that works in Berkeley. Very similar. Itchy to get it. If you look at our teams, the vast majority of our teams are very successful in that conference. I just looked up why we're sitting here. If you look at our teams, the vast majority of our teams are pretty successful in that conference. I just looked up while we're sitting here, and admittedly, and assuming those are JV cancellations, but I went to the spring sports. Of the seven spring sports, couldn't find girls' tents. Currently have three in first place in the conference. We have two that are in third place. One is in sixth place, which is baseball. Boys' Cross is in seventh place, but they're still not last, they're still following along. So there's some programs that struggle. In this, girls' basketball. Way of fixing, he's doing at the youth level. Prove. Not to bring everybody down. Anybody else?
Online in the room?
George?
Sure. I don't even know why I'm talking. I didn't even expect to be here. I think just with my own personal opinion, that with the last over thousand people in town. Might stabilize with some. Tech to, you know, less. So anyways, uh, my thought is, Tolland, ever since they joined CCC, they're out of the league. We just don't compete, and we're, we're traveling a lot, and we should be playing the local teams in our area, and um, on a more level playing field. That's my thing.
If you could give your name and address.
She don't. George Albers, thirty six, is your gamer.
Thank you. Liz Costin? Liz Costin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
What?
We can hear. Hello? Liz, we can hear you.
We can hear me. Can you hear me? Okay. Liz Costa, fifty four Josiah Lane. Um, first of all, thanks for the budget discussion tonight. I appreciate it. It is sad to even hear us talking about another world language situation. Um, and then secondly, I had no intention of speaking to sports, but I think there's a lot of concerns in switching out of the CCC. I think number one, um, from a diversity point of view, the N triple C doesn't offer as much diversity as the uh, CCC does, and I think that's really good for Tolland students. Um, number two, I heard loud and clearly that it could be a potential situation for Title Nine, which would really be concerning, because that may mean eliminating boy sports or eliminating, because they can't, there's not enough girl sports potentially, or adding other sports um, that maybe our kids aren't interested in, so I'd be really worried about that. Um, and then finally, just not having enough kids to fill, or enough teams to play, uh, whether it's freshman or uh, JV sports would be a concern. So um, I appreciate your listening, um, and I appreciated both perspectives from both uh, Mr. Garrett and Mr. McCann, and then certainly Mr. McCloskey, but I definitely support staying in the CCC. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? In the room or on the phone? Anybody that would like to speak? Alright. Hearing none, for close on public participation? Will it just share them?
Jennifer, M A C.
Conus, she's trying to say something, yeah.
Jennifer, are you trying to say something?
I am. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much. Um, yeah, thank you so much, everybody, for all your work on behalf of the students, and we know how hard you're working, um, Dr. Willitt as well. So um, please excuse my ignorance. I didn't know about the meeting, and I signed in late, and you know, I definitely hear from everybody that you are trying to save um, staff, staff uh, jobs, which everybody appreciates, and I also did not intend to speak tonight. Um, I, I'm intending to submit a letter to you and probably to town council as well, but um, I'd just like to, you know, as important as our student athletes are, and my child is also an athlete, I, I would advocate that, you know, many students also see the library as a safe space, and many electives have been lost, so while I appreciate hearing about physical education electives, I think this is something that we really need to, to think about as you are doing. Um, and I, it was, it was kind of hard to follow a little bit of the discussion. I know you wanted to move ahead and quickly a, about the option one A and, uh, I'm sorry, one and then A. If you can just recap, I mean, did we already, are we already losing certain staff with the past discussions and with the town council action, which I was extremely dismayed by? Um, can, can you recap that, or is that still something that's in play as far as the um, librarian and the science teacher and possibly ELA, and I apologize for not knowing. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, Dr. Willitt, what I think, because I, I, I believe the, the Jennifer speaks for, for a whole lot of people that are going to want to try to listen, and Jennifer's brought up a really good point. Can we update the budget page?
Good. Well, it has the reductions from, well, everything up to this point.
Up to now.
Everything, everybody wanted. Create, I would change, you know, take what you did tonight and I would add.
And then, so, so uh, Jennifer and everybody involved, uh, let me direct you to, to the website, to the budget website. Dr. Willitt will update that, and that way we have a one source of, of information there that, that will say, assuming that the referendum passes, here are the actions, and here's the way the Board of Education is going to, to deal with that budget.
It's, it's Tolland Public Schools District website, and there's a tab.
Thank you.
Yeah, somebody with a little less broad shoulders in front of me here. This is what's up, this was up to this point in time, and then we would uh, be making a.
Thank you, Dr. Willitt, and, and thank you for showing, for anybody that's not aware. That's the best place to go to get the, the latest and greatest information. Alright. So, uh, moving on, uh, the next item on the agenda is uh, an executive session. Before I accept a motion on that, um, we're getting dangerously close to ten o'clock. It's like to entertain a motion to proceed past ten o'clock, should that happen during executive session. Second? Thank you. We're going to, minutes, that was enthusiastic. Any discussion? Alright, who votes? Dan?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Jaden?
Hi.
Hi. Bill? And Dana?
Hi.
Dr. Will, can you put the motion back up for the session? Motion to launch an executive session for this specific time. So, I'll entertain a motion to enter the executive session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation.
So.
Discussion? Dan?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Jaden?
Hi.
Alright, Bill? Dana?
Hi.
Alright, so just, the motion passes, we are, we are out of executive session.
It's not on the agenda, you can't.
Moving on to the next portion there, points of interest. Anybody from the board like to speak?
See?
If you could. If you were at the agenda planning meeting, you'd know.
True.
Hearing none. Future, uh, Dr. Willitt, obviously, we have the next structural round on the twenty third, right? And on the dashboard is the sign up board. If you want to sign up, that'd be fantastic, and we love seeing, and we all got something there. That is on May twenty third, somewhere more, I think, earlier. It'll be earlier in, but then it's earlier out too. Alright, that being said, I will now entertain a motion.
I'll move. Seconded.
Any discussion? Alright, Dan?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Jaden?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Thank you, everybody. Good night.